Everybody sign in?
Everybody ready? Good? All right, we welcome everybody here tonight to our school board meeting. We're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance followed by a prayer.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you today for your many wonderful blessings and all that you've given to us, this wonderful sunshine and the weather that we're enjoying. We thank you today, Father, for an opportunity to come together and serve in our community that we live in. Lord, serve the staff and the students that we represent today. Father, today, we just pray that you would give us wisdom, knowledge, help us make the decisions that would best impact our students, the staff, and this community, Father. We just pray for your guidance and that all that we do will glorify you. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right, future board meetings. Our next one will be May 27th, followed by June 10th and July 8th. So the next couple of months will just be one meeting here at 6:00 here at Administration Building. There are a few revisions to the agenda, all over HR. Moving on to public recognition. We'll do all these under ones. Recommendation to approve $350 donation from Corteva Ag Science or MSC for Southwood FFA. Recommendation to approve a $249.90 donation from anonymous donor and $100 from Vicky Metzger through Donors Choice for Mrs. Cassie Harrell's Little Norse Pre-K 4 at Metro North Elementary. For materials to create morning, find motor bins in the classroom. Recommendation to approve $500 donation from Dick and Levon Smith for Southwood Choir. Recommendation to approve a $500 donation from Dick Levon Smith for Southwood Theater. And a recommendation to approve $2,000 from First Farmer's Naked Trust for stat appreciation. And the last one, recommendation to approve $350 from Cortella Ag Science for Northfield FFA. Motion second to approve all these donors donations. Got a motion second to approve all of these donations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, as always, we appreciate all these donors that donate to all these different areas of our school district. School recognition. Do we have any?
Yes, we do. So first of all, last week, our last meeting that we had, Jill Glasscock accepted her retirement. But one thing I did not have, and that was her years of experience, and so that was 37 years. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that tonight. And then we have a longer one here. This is from Sharp Creek with Mr. Martin. This goes along with Sharp Creek's Blue Norse Bots headed to World Championship, Robotics Championship coming up here in May. So I'd like to read this to you. Said, "The Sharp Creek Robotics Team, A, the Norse Bots, team members Lila and Noah and Hudson, Audrey and Gabriel and Hunter have earned an invitation to compete at the Vex Robotics World Championship in Dallas, Texas this May. The Sharp Creek Norse Bots are the only public school in Northern Indiana to earn a spot at the elementary Vex Robotics World Championships. This year's competition, Rapid Relay, is a fast-paced robotics challenge that resembles basketball, requiring strategy, speed, and precision. The Blue Norse Bots stood out with their innovative engineering, including a custom-designed pneumatic flipper that transfers balls between a high-goal and low-goal shooter. No other team in Indiana has a design like it, and it was this originality and ingenuity that earned them the Innovative Award at the Indiana State Championship, one of only seven judged awards that secured a spot at Worlds. Out of over 1,000 elementary teams in Indiana, all four Sharp Creek teams advanced to the state competition, placing them in the top 122 teams in the state. The Blue Norse Bots went on to finish an impressive eighth place overall at state, capping off an already incredible season. During the regular season, under the expert guidance of coaches Kevin and Amber Bretzman and Joel Nestler, the Blue Norse Bots also brought home an array of awards: two-time teamwork champions, two-time Build Award winners, Design Award winner, Skills Champion, and Judges Award at a signature event, which is a world qualifier. We commend these students not only for their accomplishments, but for their dedication, workmanship, and creativity. Their success is a shining example of what students can achieve when they're challenged, supported, and inspired. Please join us in congratulating the Blue Norse Bots and wishing them continued success as they represent Sharp Creek and Northern Indiana on the world stage. Way to go, Blue Norse Bots. We are so proud of you." So excellent information and excellent job by that team and everybody else that competed at the state.
I think they actually also got to apply to be flag bearers for the opening ceremony. I don't think they got it, but they were invited to apply. Not everybody got that invitation.
Kind of like when they go to the Olympics and do the same thing, so. I did ask Mrs. Bretzman about that and had not heard back. Did you hear?
I don't think they heard me and say that they didn't.
Okay. Or we'll say it again. So at the time, I hadn't heard anything back yet when I asked, but that was like during spring break, I believe. So that's all the recognition at this time.
All right. We'll move on to a public comment on agenda items only. If not anything there, we'll move on to our agenda items. Can I get a motion second to approve our regular minutes of March 25th? Second. Motion and second to approve those regular meeting minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Claims and payroll, 18 and 19. Questions or comments or any of that?
I think the second part of payment was on there. Which I believe that's the last one.
That's the last one?
I believe it's only two payments.
Looks like I have.
Only two.
They broke it down to.
Getting close. Yeah, they're working on the second layer.
Layer, yeah.
The final layer. And that might probably go faster than the first.
I would think so.
The LED lighting. We retro, we, not retrofitted, but we changed all the indoor lighting at Southwood Elementary into LED. There was some parking lot stuff in there. We actually are gonna work with that group to finish up the rest of the parking lots, like at Metro North. So it'll be, it won't be as high as that, but it'll be another finishing part with that. And then we should be pretty much all LEDs. Pretty close.
So it's all, all the classrooms and.
All classrooms, hallways.
And all that.
Office areas. Or something, yeah.
You got a question, any comments on that payroll and claims? All right, we got a motion second to approve the claims and payroll. Got a motion second to approve claims and payroll 18 and 19. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Financial summaries.
Yeah, since we only have one meeting this month, I went ahead and did, gave you both the end-of-the-month balances for our funds for the end of March. And then I also went ahead and did some information through the education fund and operation fund cash flows for the year. So the only thing that I would highlight right now in the education funds that we haven't talked about is I did update, we did receive our amounts for our updated ADM from this spring. So April, May, and June reflect what those actual amounts will look like from that. But I have not changed anything beyond that from what we were previously getting because we don't know what those amounts are gonna be yet because they've not approved, state legislation has not approved the budget yet. So once they do that, then we'll be able to have a general idea of what that estimated amount will be based off of the estimated ADM number that we had to provide. So there's that. And then on the operations side, the one thing that I did highlight in there was impact on, it wasn't proposed legislation at the time, now it's been approved, which was SB 1. And we'll talk a little bit about some of that. But one of the things that SB 1 does is it removes local income tax dollars that the county can provide to school districts. And so there's a line item right there on there that is highlighted that shows you what those amounts are that we are receiving for that and have received for that, and that will go away in 2028.
Where does it go to?
Goes away.
It won't be assessed. And we're still gonna be paying it, local ops.
Yes, but it can't be shared with schools.
So which part's highlighted right here?
It should have been green. I don't know why it kind of came out a funky color.
It's this yellow one, right?
Is it the yellow one?
Yeah. Local income tax, the second line under revenue.
Second row under revenue. It's a big number.
That's just one implication, so that one is, that one's pretty noticeable. I mean, obviously, there's gonna be other implications related to SB 1, but that was one that is gonna.
Right off of that.
Yeah.
You say that's 2028?
2028, yeah.
Back to the education fund.
Yeah.
On the textbook, that's. How's that flow through? Does that flow through with tuition?
It's going to.
Okay, so they're gonna give you that amount over the whole?
It'll be just lumped in with the basic grant.
And lost.
And lost, no. Won't be able to track it.
So they just give a certain amount per student?
So in the original proposal, they're on their second proposal now. They'll probably come out with a third one because of the revenue forecast. So on the first proposal, they were telling us that they, we would get a 200, like, I'm just kind of ballparking here, roughly a $200 increase in ADM. Well, part of that $200 increase was the $151 they are already giving us per kid. So in reality, we were only giving like a $48 increase to our ADM. So that's where it was in that first run. Second run was a little higher, but the revenue forecast is not very good like they had in April. So we'll see where they land in that distribution. They said all, all cuts are on the table, so all entities. So there could be a good chance that we could get cut. There could be a good chance that we remain flatline. There could be a chance that we could receive some extra dollars, but it's all on the table.
All right, any other questions on the cash flows? Well, we want the HR, we go with. All right, we're gonna start with resignations. First one is Matt Johnston, teacher at Norfolk High School, effective at the end of the school year. Hubert Baker, bus driver at South, effective immediately. Thomas Tyree, teacher and football coach at Southwood High School. That'll be effective at the end of the school year. Employment. Tracy Kennedy, summer secretary at Norfolk High School, effective June 3rd. Coach Cartwright, volunteer junior high and high school assistant golf coach at Norfolk High School, effective immediately. Colin Dawes, assistant golf coach for Northfield, effective immediately. Trey Cole, head golf coach for Northfield, effective immediately. And Jeff Springer, clay target coach for Norfolk High School, effective immediately. Logan Julian, band teacher, Southwood High School, effective 8/11. Meredith Hopper, math teacher, Norfolk High School, effective 8/11. Michaela Tunnel, long-term sub at Sharp Creek Elementary, effective 8/11. Caleb Parry, Spanish teacher, Southwood High School, effective 8/11. Under retirement, Ricky Reed, custodian of Southwood High School, effective at the end of the school year. Brian Snodgrass, Southwood High School, effective at the end of the school year. Termination, number 8, or 191, terminated April 7th, 2025. Under leave, 190. Leave will begin April 11th, returning for the 25-26 school year. Transfers. Janelle Ekman, transferred from teacher at Metro North Elementary to educational competition for WMAP, effective for the next school year, 25-26. Evelyn Fowler, transferring from classroom instructor to teacher at White's High School, effective 25-26 school year. All the rest of these are all the summer school staff for the schools. Jeanette Moore, K-38 program coordinator. Second, third grade reading support at SC at Southwood Elementary. Second grade teacher, Megan Wright, second grade parent professional, Amber Sweet. Third grade teacher, Melissa Dieter, third grade parent professional, Jennifer Finney. Second, third grade reading support for Metro North Elementary. Second grade teacher, Spacey Bone, second grade parent professional, Becca Elsie. Third grade teacher, Tara Hoppers, third grade parent professional, Caleb Black. Minds in Action, Level 1, Lori Schultz. Caleb Paul and Jeanette Moore. Level 2, Caleb Paul, Heather Quick and Jeanette Moore. Level 3, Shelby Gibson, Brett Evans and Jeanette Moore. Summer Learning Lab at Southwood Elementary. Kindergarten teacher, Patty Steele, first grade teacher, Michaela Tunnel, and third grade, second grade teacher, Kelly Bear. Summer Learning Lab at Metro North Elementary. Kindergarten teacher, Angie Harry. First grade teacher, Angie Benner. And second grade teacher, Nicole Knox. And Tanya Boone, 9 through 12 programming director, coordinator, sorry. Addendum. Adam Phelps, MEO precinct, SAE, Tom Callaway, or Tim Callaway and Cal Parsons. Got a motion second to approve all those HR reports. Got a motion second to approve our HR report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Just like to mention too, Ricky Reed and Brian Snodgrass, appreciate their service at Southwood. Many years for Ricky. Brian hasn't been with us as long, but Ricky's been here for many years. So appreciate their service and wish them well in their retirement.
All right, appreciate that. We'll move on to reports. Heartland Care Center.
Mr. Q Huber said that the base layer and repairs are done. They're working on the top layer now, so it should go through the quit. All the hardware's done. On May 8th, they'll have open house of the construction for the house that they built between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. If you want to come take a look at that, that'd be fine. Donations. Mr. Lyons, Mr. Minthor and Alros Steele all gave a bunch of supplies, more supplies to the school. They continue to do that for you. That's basically it. Super special, they're gonna do roof repair and it goes.
Okay. All right, superintendent.
Okay, I got several things. First of all, we have not had a transportation outside of school district standard operating procedure before. And so we have this draft, I've shared this with you. And you can see basically who it applies to and the scope of it as far as applies to students currently enrolled in MSU Walrus County Schools and living outside of district boundaries and also new students enroll, enrollees who reside outside the district boundaries. So the procedure, it talks about the grandfathering clause for current students and then transportation for new students outside of the district. Basically, bus transportation, and that's 2.1. Bus transportation for students who enroll after May 2025 and reside outside the legal settlement will only be provided if an existing bus route passes directly by the student's home. Transportation will not be modified or extended to accommodate students outside the district. I will say that when we get down to the end, there is a clause that says that that could be changed a little bit. The eligibility verification will be done. Transportation approval process, which is pretty standard. Compliance with bus safety rules obviously is something we always want to happen. And then the rules responsibilities of the transportation director, school administrators and families. And then the effective date would be when we approve this. And then the review and amendments, SOP. SOP will be reviewed by the transportation director administrative team on as-needed basis to ensure its effectiveness. Additional notes then, exceptions to SOP will require approval from the superintendent or designated. And so there are some things that could happen to do that. And then changes in bus routes that impact eligibility will be communicated to affected families promptly. And as you can see, there's a couple of things that play into this again. We have another bus driver that has resigned. And so we do not even have a full staff right now because we have substitutes that are working with that. We would love to be able to go everywhere and do all of that, but that's what we continue to have to be concerned about, just having enough bus drivers. And then also with SB 1, which we'll talk about a little bit more, will affect some of our funding that we have for not just, not just transportation, but other things involved with the school. So we could talk about this again next meeting. But it's always evolving all the time because of staff members, in particular here, bus drivers, routes, how many students that we have. And so this is one thing that we would like to put into place once you, we can look at it again next meeting, so.
Was this modeled after other school districts' policies or?
No, it's just, we formed it ourselves, so.
I just wondered, what are the places we did?
I think if you see, there's places all over that are advertising for bus drivers all the time. And so. And our difference is that we have 300 square miles compared to other districts around us. Now Huntington's is a good one, obviously, but everybody else around us is not near as large.
Do we ever consider, or maybe we do split morning and evening on the bus routes, different drivers? It takes. Right, typically in the past, it's been one individual day, morning and afternoon. I don't know, if shortage gets more intense, we have to look at hiring for the morning and then a different person will be hired for the afternoon.
Give the board staff for that, right?
It just would fit schedules. I mean, if somebody wanted to, I don't know if anybody's ever come to us and said, hey, you know.
I probably do mornings or.
I think that we would look at it if we had those people that were available to do that.
Well, I see what you're saying because, you know, if you advertise it that way, knowing that maybe you could fill that.
Usually it doesn't get dry for you guys, you know, in the morning, so.
See, some people wanna.
Is that what you're saying, or you kind of, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we can do it in the morning, we just can't do it in the afternoon.
Take it home in the afternoon, so.
Well, I don't know what the answer is. Other than you just gotta keep your pricing repaid to attract.
Yeah, and we'll continue to do that as much as we can. And I know, like for Melissa, for example, she probably averages driving at least two days a week, it feels like.
Jay Snyder has driven, other people have driven, I've driven.
Well, we appreciate it. I mean, that's reflecting.
You're retired.
We can pick. He's picking one of them.
Well, and the other thing is, you know, by law, the other thing that we've thought about in the past too is just being able to look at our activity buses, to be able to use one of those. But by law, we can't pick up people door-to-door on that. And so that would certainly help too because it's not just the pay though. It is what you're saying though too. It might be convenience of the work if you can do morning and afternoon or not morning or afternoon. But the other situation is, you know, today is actually bus driver appreciation day. And so I saw a post someone put on there, they're not just a bus driver, you know. They counsel kids, they go to different events, they do different things. But also how much they have to learn to become a bus driver. And it's not, it's not real easy and it's a lot of time to do all that, so.
Big responsibility.
Very big responsibility, so. We can, you know, you can look at this again, ask questions. It does leave it open though, I mean, that's why I highlighted it there. It does leave it open that if, if exceptions can happen, approval of the superintendent or designated. But it's difficult when we don't have all the answers that we need. In other words, we don't have the drivers necessarily. We don't know even in the summertime, you know, who's gonna be the new students? You know, is there gonna be a situation where, how it's gonna work, so.
It's a never-evolving thing.
So that's that. So the other thing I want to share, and I want to, I want to share several things first before we, I want to share a video coming up here in a little bit. But talking about legislation because that's a big thing that's going on. We really didn't know what was gonna happen this year, but we knew there was gonna be a lot of talk about the budget and about property taxes. And so just to give you a little examples, number one, there are still 29 House bills for education that are on the tracker, eight have been signed by the governor. I'm not gonna go over all those, but there are eight. And Dr. Q and I have looked at those together and because there's some things that will have to do with that. Senate bills, there's actually still 22 Senate bills still on the tracker, and there are four that have already been signed by the governor. Another interesting thing, over the last 25 years, legislation has, this is the state legislation, has put in place 560 mandates to traditional public schools, K through 12. So it's just interesting how much has been added to the plate of schools. And so anyway, that's that. But I do want to play a video, and I know when I did this earlier, I think I'm gonna have to.
Corporations.
Oh, it did work. So. But this is about three minutes long, but this will explain Senate Bill 1 a little bit more and then we'll show another slide deck that we would like to share. So I'm gonna go to, not working. Now where did she go? Yeah, and we're not gonna listen to all that, we're gonna go to 18. And these are the top three things that the Indiana School Board Association, they sent out on Fridays. You might have seen this already, but Lisa Tanzel is one of the attorneys there at the Indiana School Board Association. The director actually usually does it, but apparently he was not available. So I just want to show this and you can learn a little bit more about this.
Was the third reading dead, like, for both the House and the Senate? Meaning that any bill that was not called down by the author by Tuesday of this week is considered dead. Looking at the ISBA tracking list, it looks like we will remove 14 bills from our list because they are considered to be dead. Other bills on our list are on their way to the governor for his signature or are being assigned to the confidence committee. So speaking of the governor's signing. So speaking of the governor's signed bills, issue number one, Senate Bill one, has been signed by the governor. He signed this bill on Tuesday of this week. As you know, this is the bill that was designed to give significant property tax relief to taxpayers, but unfortunately it resulted in a significant decrease in expected property tax revenues available to public school corporations. Other provisions in the bill include limiting referendum questions to the general election ballot and requiring certain school corporations to share operating referendum dollars with charter schools beginning in twenty twenty eight. Lastly, the bill also includes language that will dissolve the union of school corporations effective July one, twenty twenty seven. Issue number two, the revenue forecast was presented to the Senate Budget Committee just yesterday. The April forecast estimates a loss in state revenue or a decrease in state revenue of over two billion dollars over the next two years. Obviously, this news greatly impacts House Bill ten oh one, the budget bill, and the ability of the general assembly to give school corporations any significant increase in tuition support dollars. Issue number three, conference committees. House Bill ten oh one has been assigned to a conference committee, and it is through this conference committee process that the final version of the bill will be negotiated. Other bills assigned to conference committee include Senate Bill two eighty seven, the bill on partisan school board elections. The conference committee was scheduled to convene to this morning, but that meeting was canceled. So we are awaiting to see if it will be scheduled sometime next week. Two other bills on our tracking list that are currently in conference committee include House Bill ten oh two, the education deregulation bill, and Senate Bill forty between the absenteeism bill. As I said, all of these bills.
That's, I was going to end it there, three twenty five, so. Not necessarily great news at all, but just want to make sure you saw and heard that because it explains it pretty succinctly, so. Questions, comments?
Maybe it doesn't pertain to us, but Union Township School, why did they dissolve that one? Were they financially bankrupt?
No, they have a, I think they have a twenty million dollar budget approximately.
Yeah, I don't know the specifics. I do know that it's a brick and mortar school, about three hundred kids, district wide. But they actually have enrollment of nine thousand kids because they have a virtual school that they run. And so I think there has just been some concern with that school corporation in various areas related to testing results, scores as part of it. And I think they had been, that county had been in earlier conversations about a potential consolidation, but it never happened. And so I think there are a lot of things that have led up to a representative making a decision to put that into a bill.
Which opens it up?
I know.
I think it's Travis.
Two counties, if I remember.
Yes, Travis, that's Travis.
So, and really the session by statute is supposed to end by April twenty ninth, but they say that they'll probably try to finish this week. So we should know a lot more answers on them by the end of the week as far as House Bill ten oh one with the budget. We already have the property tax information, but that's what we want to go over next. So we'll just go over that quickly here, this is effective July one. I guess Dr. Q. And I both have talked a little bit about this, but I'll just let him chime in. He'll know a lot more about to continue on here, but, you know, schools with debt service tax rate, the seventy cents must use referendums for new debt. It used to be eighty cents, and so.
That's a new law, that was a new law just a couple of years ago.
Right.
Because when we built our debt plan, we obviously made it so that we wouldn't be close to that threshold of eighty cents. Now with the property tax relief and the loss of assessed valuation that we'll see happen, well, when your assessed valuation goes down, your tax rate goes up. And so that could push us up to that seventy cent threshold, which would then really limit our potential for future borrowing. Because to borrow over that seventy cents, you'd have to go through a referendum, which makes it really unique for situations like our partnerships with Heartland Career Center. And so, for example, you know, we're trying to look at ways to help make improvements with that facility because there hasn't been any improvement since it's really been built in the seventies. And, you know, there will be school corporations that we are members with in that, that will be over that seventy cent threshold. And so how, how does that relate to, does that mean we all have to try to pass a referendum to take, to be able to improve that facility? Is it just those? You know, I think it just creates massive bigger obstacles that we weren't really anticipating when we, you know, built some of these processes, I guess, to settle.
And we did meet with our professionals, our financial and our other professionals as far as, you know, attorneys with the rest of the members of Heartland Career Center. And there's some different ideas to go along with that, but it is going to be very challenging.
So there, I mean, that could impact us, that's one of those that could really impact us for the future.
And I think we sent this to the PAC, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but you can see assessed value changes with the homes that is a farm land, a commercial, and then the circuit breaker losses there, so. Here again, great for property owners, different people like that, but when it comes down to it, it will affect municipalities and also schools. I shared this, Chris, but.
So the, the big thing with it is that they, the legislation used, has used the term a decrease in the increase. So, you know, we'll still receive an operation fund levy, but it is not to, it's not going to increase at least for the next year more than four percent. And in the future years, we don't know if it will increase at all or if it may decrease. Who knows, because they're talking about going to, instead of a levy rate tax base, to a tax rate tax base, which would cap, which means they could cap what our tax rate could be. And then the amount of money we get just depends on what our assessed valuation was at that point in time. And so with a lower assessed valuation, lower dollars you're going to collect. And so that's still on the table for the future, not been decided yet right now, but there is that possibility. And so we do know we're going to lose the lit dollars, which we'll get into in a second. But the whole thing was that our property tax levy would not really increase for the most part. Shouldn't decrease, but with everything that's in there, who knows? That's the thing, so.
We were talking about the referendums, I think, during general elections. Additional financial impacts there, you could see that, some different credits. But just like Chris said, low home income tax, the lit revenue ends in twenty twenty eight.
There is some language in there so that if our, if a district's assessed valuation does increase, the tax rate has to decrease. And so if you want the tax to increase when the assessed valuation increases, then you have to do something, you have to do a hearing and you have certain procedures, say, put in place to, to have that happen.
So summary kind of finalizes, most of it, lower revenues, increased referendum reliance and tighter financial limits, so. So again, that vote was twenty seven to twenty two, pretty much along party lines. But our own Senator, our representative Senator Andy Zay did vote no for that, I think. I did not talk to him, but I did know, I talked to him, but not specifically why he said no, but probably because there's some things in there, maybe it's because of union, maybe because of some other things how it affects schools, but we appreciate him looking at that to see if there could have been some changes to that, so.
And we'll learn more about it and see, I don't want to be doom and gloom, but, you know, they have said that this budget mirrors the complications that happened in oh eight, oh nine with recession. And so that was a huge impact on schools and school districts at that time. We obviously felt part of that impact a few years down the road from that. And so we'll continue to learn more and we'll continue to find ways to make things work. But things probably will be tight for a while.
And a positive note, we're in better shape than what we were nine years ago.
Yes.
And so if it was nine years ago, this thing happened, that would have been a different situation.
Regardless of what side of the fence you are on this issue, it's just the whole curve ball we've sat here for the last two, three years, making long-term plans.
This is a complete.
Put everybody in the same basket.
This is basically, they, this is basically a complete restructuring of the tax, of property taxes. And so it, with, it's not over with this bill. I mean, there's going to be other budget sessions down the road that's going to continue to make those property tax changes. And so how it all shapes out, we have no idea. I mean, this is, we just know what we will have to deal with with these next two years. And so, but it will be a complete, I believe it'll be a complete change in that our property taxes are managed and figured out.
Anything else on that? All right, we move on to new business. We've got a recommendation to approve an overnight extended out of state field trip for Shark Creek Blue North Spots to the Vex IQ Robotics Competition, May eleventh through fifteenth to Dallas, Texas. Motion second to approve that field trip. Second. Got a motion of second to approve that out of state field trip, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Finished business.
Board policy, so you got a video here?
Well, video cameras, it's, yeah, sixty one ten, video cameras. Yeah, really, this is just, left all the strikeouts in here and different changes like that. This is just the first reading, but a lot of it's based on some other information we've learned from video recordings, like in the second paragraph here. Video points may become a part of student's educational record under FERPA. Guidelines for staff members' personnel record under Access Public Records Act guidelines. Districts shall comply with all applicable state, federal record maintenance and retention laws. And then it explains a little bit about the review of video by school. And then one thing that we haven't had in place is that we need to make sure that we have, we let people know about, we have video cameras and some are audio. And one way that we were told through a council that we could actually have, not local council, but through School Boards Association, that we could do this in a student handbook. So we will put this in the student handbooks to make sure that people do know that we do have cameras. I think most people already know, but just to make sure that's written in there. So this is just the first reading, just to clean up some things, and of course, we'll build on this next, next meeting.
Question on that first paragraph, the last sentence is lined out. Why is that? Contents of the video may be used as evidence of student disparers pursuit.
Because it's that, so it's taken out of the purpose section. Review of the video by school, yeah, it's in the fourth paragraph.
Okay.
Yeah, that next to last sentence actually has, that's a good question. So if you have any questions between now and then, Josh, if you, I was going to get with you on this too, but it's some of that same information we got from Lisa Tanzel and her policy, so things that we already discussed, so. If we're good, should be, no, I think my review makes sense based on kind of some things we came across, we had to take a look at it. So that's it for now. It is a revision, it's already one in place, but that's why we had it straightened out and added.
All right, have a comment, all items.
Yeah, so we had originally agreed upon that we would have an answer regarding the transportation situation before the end of the school year. So if we needed to switch, we could have our kiddo say goodbye. And I appreciated, we didn't know that that transportation in SOP was going to be part of this meeting tonight.
Perfect timing.
Yeah, it was great. Would you mind pulling that back up? Is that something that we need to over? I know that.
Or I can just give you a copy afterwards.
That works too, I would like to discuss it now if we could, but I know that it hasn't been approved, correct? That my understanding, that kind of, it was just brought up, going to be discussed and approved or not for the next, if I understand.
That's correct.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding the draft on the speech. There we go. So students currently enrolled, if you have a bus already, you're continuing to get a bus. You will be grandfathered in. Doesn't, doesn't bother those people. But the current non-resident students not receiving transportation will follow procedures in number two, so that's us. Not that we don't want transportation, we are just not receiving it. So that procedures in number two would be. We don't get a bus unless it's on our road.
Or, or if you go down to here, exceptions to the, yeah.
Okay.
It all depend, yeah. Go ahead, I'll let you.
Well, that was just, that was just my question is, I know that some of the, some of the students that have, that are, I agree with if they're already getting transportation. I'm not, I do not want transportation to be taken away from any child that does not live in the district now that is getting transportation. But in certain scenarios that I have seen where a bus is on a road, picking up a student in our proximity, not on our road, but in our proximity, already going out of district, those students were given, those current non-resident students were receiving transportation, so they were allowed to be, they were allowed to be grandfathered in. We weren't given that option. If that makes sense. I know that on seven hundred, the bus doesn't go there, the bus goes to seven hundred for the specific student, students, just to pick them up, and that's it. So that just seems a little, I hate using the word up here, life's not here, but it just seems a little odd that they could be grandfathered in, but we've been students, we've been enrolled since twenty three. So technically, if we would have been allowed to have that, then we would be grandfathered in, but because.
So you, you've been on seven hundred?
We do not live on seven hundred, no, that's where.
That's where the bus is at now.
The bus is going out of district currently, which is the same distance out of district that we would be.
I think we're just, like, we understand there has to be a line somewhere, right? It's here, then it goes, and then the next person, we get it, like, I understand. Our biggest thing is, like, we just need an answer. So my son, Garrett's in first grade. So my son, Garrett's in first grade, he's been to three different preschools, he's been to two different kindergartens, and now he's, you know, it's.
Trying to get some stability.
So if it is a different school district for us, I would rather do it when he's in second grade than do it when he's in fifth grade, sixth, you know, like, because right now we're building those friendships. If he goes to another school in second grade, it's not for Rocket's world, you know, they just, well, and I get it, we don't like it. But, and I understand, you know, contract, like writ writing, you know, there's always exceptions that can be made. I guess for us, it would be like, we would really would like to know if that exception is going to be made. And if it's not, I mean, it's not, and that's fine. But we need to make where we're going to go sooner rather than later.
And we said by the end of the school year, so we'll try to make that decision. And unfortunately, we said that, we probably should have said, well, if we go to August, because there's so many, there's so many questions between May and August too. Even having enough bus drivers for the regular routes that we have right now, which we don't have. And so the, those are things that it's just tough to, but we did say in the end of the year, so. Which is coming up?
Yeah, and obviously it's, it's just one of those things that just trying to, you know, we, we want, we want all kids, you know, to have access, but it's, like you said, you gotta draw a line.
Yeah, it has to do, and I, and I get that.
It has to, and somehow you have to come to that determination. And, and obviously, maybe we'll have a whole slew of bus drivers that walk in the door and.
Yeah, there we go, yeah, yeah.
I know you live south of town. But I, I do appreciate you guys, you know, coming in and, you know, you gotta, you gotta ask the question. You're not, if you can't, if you don't ask it, you're not going to get answered. And so we'll, we'll do our best, and obviously Melissa's probably wants to make it happen, but we'll see what the ultimate answer is and.
Will the ultimate answer be at the next school, I mean?
It's at the end of May.
I said by the end of the school year, which would be earlier than that though, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so basically you want to have the answer so his, your son can say goodbye, can say.
But not so much even.
I don't, I don't want to blindside him in August and say, you thought that you're going to Metro with your buddies, and now you're not. Sorry, mom's having a baby, can't take you to school. Like, I don't, I don't want that to, his, his world's already. But that should not trigger your decision.
For me, it is a third kid, though.
Well, I do as a board member, you know, we're, we're trying to reach out.
True.
And yet we don't want to limit access in any way either. So if that's the conflict, I find myself in.
And I don't think it's a conflict if we had the bus drivers and the financial means to do all that. I don't think that's a, that's probably, I mean, there would be other people we could pick up too. But here again, we are a large, large district. We're the 22nd largest geographical district in the state of Indiana out of 292 districts. And so it, it makes it a little bit more difficult than other, other districts, so. No excuse, it's just a fact, so. And it's not that Melissa Ball's done a great job trying to recruit. We have these driving, we drive a bus days and different things like that, but then a lot of times people figure out, oh, this is a lot harder than I thought. And there's a lot to it, and so it's just a lot to it.
She's even gotten state license trainings to be here at Lawfield. So people will have to drive to Fort Wayne or Indianapolis.
Try to help out too.
To take those classes.
We've already asked her that.
We've already, we've already threw that. She went like that, no way.
About your plans, but.
As you finalize this SOP, operating procedures, should there be a formal or something drawn up that people such as them could appeal, or they write that, and it's submitted, rather than just throw it out verbally? I guess, I don't.
I don't disagree. I think there is a part on there, and we would probably just need to create a form of some sort that would request. Is that what you're trying to do? How, how a parent can like.
Request.
Request to see if it's an option.
And, you know, certainly have their address and all.
Yeah.
About how much additional route would have to be added to.
I can tell you the number's three miles. Now, I live on the corner of 850, right behind the poet.
On the other side of the tracks.
On 100 east.
On the, on the east side of the track.
So behind you, it's 100 east, that runs from 900 to 700, on dirt road.
Yeah.
And we live on the corner of 850, right behind the Hopper's Farm, right beside us. And the Erosman's Farm category to us. That's where we're at. We, we see, it's not, I mean, for what it's worth, they drive past 150 on 700 going.
So I mean, I understand the line's got to be aligned somewhere, but.
But we can see it.
We have offered though too, if you want to meet someplace too, that would be.
Is there, is there a drop off, like, before you go to work, you could drop off like at your parents or something?
And that might be something. My parents live at 200 north. But at that point, when you're driving into 200 north, you might as well just drop off.
Well, I'm just saying at an earlier time, that can be, you know, drop off at mom and dad, or something that you could pick up the bus at that.
Right, obviously, that's not ideal, but.
But if you're going to work already, I'm just, I'm just going out.
If his, if his work schedule was a little bit more.
I mean, I drop them off most days. It's just the, the whole part.
Yep.
Is where you gotta have, you've gotta be picked up sometime.
Yeah, yeah, that's too early.
And but getting there is not the problem. It's the ability to get home. But anyway, we don't even talk about it anymore. We appreciate the SOP. I think that's awesome. I mean, nothing, what I would like it to say, but, you know, the ability to have one of those.
We said that we were, yeah.
It's just been missing for a while.
It's never been in place, even before us either, so.
All right, any board, items for board members? All right, we're adjourned.